Seriously.
They can have desks?
You found it? Okay, see how bad I am? Thank you Superintendent.
I'm gonna put the divider back up.
I understand that, yes, yes, exactly. All right, well, thank you, executive session ran a little bit longer, the time is now 6:21. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item 4.1, approval of the agenda for June 21st, 2021.
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hammers?
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
All right, 5.1, President's Comments. Public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the board, fill out the required public participation at the board meeting forums and then submit it to Ms. Hammers. If you are going to email, please email your phone number and the topic of discussion or the agenda item to which you want to address at boe@sps186.org if you wish to participate via telephone. Superintendent, 6.1.
All right. Ms. Hammers, I'll just put my presentation up, please. Take this while I'm speaking, so you can hear me. All right, once again, celebrate 186. This is the time of the year where we have several things kind of going on that are new and exciting for the summer months. You go on to the next slide, you'll see the groundbreakings. This is both Washington and Jefferson Middle School with IDG Architects. And so we're very excited to have them onboard, working with us for about $10.3 million of work that will begin immediately and go through all of next school year, finishing up at the end, hopefully in the spring. And I'm excited because this expands cafeteria space, expands classrooms, adds elevators, and provides a lot of new space that were needed in both of those schools. So it was fun going out, thank you to all the board members who were able to attend those and they had student representatives at both sites. And we had past principals at the event, so we're excited. I see Ms. Crump back there, she's excited for all of the stuff that's gonna go on at your school, but also know that with any big project like this, we will have some interruptions and some new ways of having to do things throughout the year, but we're all committed to making it as smooth as possible. We're going on to the next slide. We kicked off our summer boost programs, we're very excited about how things are going. The focus is literacy, mathematics, social emotional learning, and credit recovery, all done in an atmosphere that really gives kids the opportunity to enjoy the summer, but also get ahead and maybe get a little caught up as well. So in high school, right now, we have 1,140 across all three high schools enrolled and doing a good job. Middle school, we have 400 across the five sites. Extended school year for our students with special needs, we have 100 that are having services through Lee School throughout the summer months. And then Camp Compass started today at elementary and we currently have 608 students across the five sites. And I can't say this without also mentioning Boys and Girls Club and the Urban League, who also do a lot of great programming for our students and many other partners throughout the community, but they have pretty large programs as well. So if we want to move on, we also have Camp Invention, which is a paid program that a lot of our kids are participating into. So here's some great pictures from Camp Compass. You can see they really take their camp theme and take it to the next level. So students were pretending to sit in a campfire today, you saw teachers that were dressed in their camp attire, Camp Compass t-shirts, and the learning started immediately as they walked in the door today. So thank you to, I see Mila and Bree back there that went around and got some amazing photographs and got that love of seeing the kids back in school and back working to their full potential today, so thank you for that. I just wanted to go over a little bit what we've been working on with our COVID testing. I sat in on a meeting today with IDPH and the Illinois State Board of Education, and as we go into the fall, we have yet to receive our final guidance that says this is what we really are going to require of you or how we're going to move forward when it comes to things like wearing our masks, you know, being three feet distance between one another, all of those mitigating factors. But the one thing that they stated is that in districts that have good testing programs available, they do see 50% less of cases being spread during the school day. We've had binax now for like three months, and so we have really learned how to use it. Our nurses have become adept at knowing when to give it and when not to give it, and making sure that it's available and it's communicated that we have that available. This is for symptomatic staff and students to take if we see a symptom. People aren't feeling quite right, we can do that, and it gives them a rapid, within 15 minutes, indicator of whether they're positive. They say that the positive tests are almost 100%. If you test positive on those, you get it. If you test negative, they'll want to test you again, and they'll want you to follow up with your physician if you have those symptoms that do relate to COVID testing. Once again, that's school administered, and then the district has to report back those results of whether they're positive or negative for every test that is taken. So our nurses and also central office, we have a pretty extensive system where we log into that. So the next test that's on the horizon is the S.H.I.E.L.D. test, which you may know as the saliva test or the U of I saliva test, because those are the individuals that created that. It has been FDA-approved at this point in time. It is a full PCR test. This is really gonna prepare us for what's to come. It's a layered approach to the mitigations that we already have in place, and it's important for unvaccinated individuals to have this test available so that we can hopefully ward off any variants that might come about that could spread within our unvaccinated individuals in our community. So the results are within 12 to 24 hours. It's free to us, completely 100% free to tier one or tier two districts, and we are a tier two district that links back to evidence-based funding and kind of the protocols and the formula that goes along with that. It is completely 100% supported by the state of Illinois by a third party, so we have a third party coming in, doing the collection, sending it off to the lab, then communicating to the people who took the test as well as back to the school, so that we can do any contact tracing that needs to happen. Throughout the summer months, we're trying this out at summer school. We're only testing those that are unvaccinated, and then also athletes and people that are in close quarters that are also not vaccinated. We're asking for our athletes to do that. There is a waiver that has to be signed by family in order to give the test, though, and also a waiver signed by adults if they're taking it as an adult. So right now, they are setting up the protocols, setting up the process of how we're gonna do it. Mr. Miller actually came out and watched it in action the other day, just to see it. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on what we're doing, and we're trying to learn and work out all the kinks right now before the school year starts.
I have a quick question, are we still only aiming for the high school level students? Is that what we're doing?
Middle school and high school, for sure.
Middle school and high school.
But we've been told that we may have it available for younger students if we wish to move forward, but we want to work out the kinks and understand how to give it to high school students.
Well, if we're trying to target that unvaccinated population, that 12 and under is, you know, really a higher rate of unvaccinated versus 12 and older.
Right, so we've only been approved for free testing for the middle and high school at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a vaccination clinic, once again, this is just so that we can open our doors for those individuals who wish to be vaccinated. Thursday, June 24th, 2021, it will be from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., utilizing the Springfield High School Commons, where you can just kind of go in and go out, they've got a nice system set up there. You can sign up for the second dose if you got the first one a few weeks ago, or you can sign up for the first dose at this clinic, and once again, this is the Pfizer vaccine. There is some information on our website and to find the details about signing up for the vaccination. Also look for us to also support families who may be needing some vaccination and physicals for the beginning of the school year that are the required immunizations. I do want to say, please, please, please call your regular care physician and get those physicals and immunizations that are required every single school year by law now, so that you don't have to wait and be possibly out of school even longer after a long year of not being in school. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything to support families in that as well. We have had some huge celebrations over the last week, and we just wanted to share a few of us, a few of them with you. Jamari Drake is a 2016 Southeast graduate. She got ninth place in the NCAA High Jumps, which is huge in and of itself, but had an opportunity to go to the Olympic Trials, and she finished 10th, which is really amazing. And she's got a lot more years to train and grow and get stronger and make it to that next Olympic, you know, and so we just couldn't be more proud of her, and it's been great press for her and really hoping that she does well and continues to do well in her college years. Obviously, you've heard about the Springfield High baseball team winning the 3A state championship. This is the first time that any district high school has won the baseball state championship for 3A, and specifically Springfield High, of course, has never made it. They've had a couple second-place berths, one back when I was in high school. So they were excited, they were definitely the underdogs going in, they had six comeback wins in a row, meaning they were down in the count earlier in the game and came back to win. Really stuck it out, a lot of grit, a lot of determination, a lot of teamwork, different balance of players each game to make sure that they had done their research. Couldn't say enough to the coaches, Coach Steinwort has given 34 years of service as head coach at Springfield High, teaching and coaching. This team was just determined to win, and they did it, they really gritted it out in some great games. I got to go over to the super sectional game and watch, and I couldn't have been more thrilled at that win, that was a comeback from behind win, I didn't think it could get any better. And then, although I tried to take a short vacation last week, I was listening to this while I was away to both games, and we had a blast hearing the excitement. So just wanted to give them a shout out, and thank you to everybody who made the return parade and event at Springfield High the next day, a great event, many of you attended, so I appreciate that. We had some other great spring sports that, you know, show in the state tournaments. Sarah Byrd, who I know personally, watched her play volleyball for many years as well, she ended up getting second place in the state for the shot put. And so that is no, you know, that was our 3A, lots of competition with that, so I couldn't be more proud of her. She threw 13.56 meters, I can't even imagine doing that, I could probably throw it like right there, so she did a great job. The SHS Boys Tennis took two different people to state, they took a team, Brian Becker and David Yang to the state meet. They were the first team All-State, and they finished five matches, winning five matches and only losing two at the state tournament, and so that put them in the top eight for doubles teams. And then Noah Williams, who's a freshman, he went with singles, finished three and two, and was in the top 16 as a freshman. So there's a lot more to come, his mom's a teacher in the district too, and played tennis for Springfield High, so great tennis family, I'm really looking forward to watching them in the future. And then Lamphier Boys Track, see how I changed that font to orange, isn't that creative? Summertime, we got a little extra time. Lamar Manning did the long jump, 6.73 meters, and got ninth in the state. And then Tiere Butler, 11.1 seconds in the 100 meter, getting him fifth in the state. So we had said a lot of great things to celebrate this week in terms of athletics, and our kids doing great things even though it's summer. So I think that's my presentation tonight, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent, that was really a celebrate 186. Okay, so moving on to 7.1, old business. Is there any old business that board members would like to discuss? I'm moving on to 7.2. Is there any new business that the board members would like to bring before the board? Okay, it looks as this evening, we do not have any presentations. Superintendent, 9.1, Business Report.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Fetz.
Thank you, President Mars, members of the board, pleasure to be here tonight. Want to start on Slide 2, Ms. Hammers, thank you very much. This is a financial summary through the month of May 2021. You'll see our education fund revenues year-to-date, $98.7 million. Expenditures, $107.7 million, for about a $9 million decrease in cash flow so far this year. O and M Fund through May, $9.5 million in revenues. Expenditures of $12.9 million for a deficit of $3.4 million. And again, this is prior to receiving any of our local property taxes, which started coming in three weeks ago.
Next slide, please.
This is our outstanding state payments, against as of last Thursday, June 17th. You'll see we had about $2.7 million outstanding, and most of that was EBF funding, which typically comes in within a week or two of that voucher, so I would expect that $2.2 million will be in time of year within the next week, as normally comes in. Rest of that is mostly our old childhood funding, especially private debt.
Next slide, please.
Here's our full operating fund information for cash on the left-hand side, there you'll see our cash operating at the end of May, just under $12.5 million, non-operating, $15.3. Total cash for the district, just under $27.8 million. Investments of just shy of $80 million for total cash and investments. Will operate in, not operating, $107.54 million. To the right there, you'll see our investment interest year-to-date, pretty stark decline from the prior year date, going from May of last year, $303,000 this year versus just about a million last year. Our current interest rate on all accounts is about 0.35%. Interesting to note, the sales tax proceeds there at the bottom right, we did receive, we had a record month of receipts, we just received $1.133 million. That is our best month by far since the sales tax went into effect with the district. In fact, our second best month was $140,000 less than that, so we were not only setting a new benchmark, but also well exceeding our prior best.
And that was March?
That's June, correct. You'll see that compared to same time last year is about a $400,000 increase over the same month last year. Full collections year-to-date, excuse me, from the onset of the sales tax implementation, just under $17.4 million. Next slide, please. As promised, follow-up on last evening's presentation, we did receive our second payment from Franklin County, so you'll see that second payment broken out there in the second column for you. This payment was very similar to our first payment, we had just under $28 million last time, we received another 28, almost 28.1 million last Friday from the county, so our total payments received on property taxes is just under $56 million, and that puts us right at the 49.88%, which is right on target, this percent is kind of our baseline as I look back over the last 10 to 15 years, so right on target there for our tax payments. And to final, to speak to Mr. Ringer's question about being his part tip at the last meeting, I did follow-up with the city on that. If the tip does terminate, and you have renewed the tip from the state legislature this fall, the taxes coming back to the district, that incrementally will hold about $286,000 in the annual, every year.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Fetz, and that 49.88%, is that 49.88% collected as of so far?
Collected of the $112 million in the first column, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Fetz. Okay, moving on to 10.1, Consent Action Items. Superintendent?
President Mars and members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items 10.2 through 10.15, as described in the corresponding resolution.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammers?
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
Okay, moving on to 11.1, Roll Call Action Items. Superintendent?
Mrs. Sherman?
President Mars and members of the board, Superintendent recommends adoption of personnel recommendations with one change. Page 1, Who hires rehires? Administrative, item 1, the job title should be principal assistant rather than assistant principal.
Could entertain a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
Superintendent, 11.2.
I'm gonna just go back a minute for personnel recommendations, because we proceeded some new administrators in the district, and I reminded myself this time, it's all good. I'd like to introduce Jamie Womack, she is now going to be the guidance dean at Jefferson Middle School, previously had been the intern at Franklin Middle School and at Douglas for years as case manager, so welcome aboard to Jefferson, and I know you have some visitors with you and some people representing you.
I'm Heidi, and I'm just having a little bit of fun.
Well, thank you. We also have Alicia Miller, who has served our district amazing at Southern View Elementary School, and I couldn't love her more, look at her, she's ready to roll, but she has taken on the role of assistant principal at Lamphier High School, and I know that they are going to be just in love with you the first second you step on ground, so I know you have somebody with you as well.
I do, I have. My name is Mr. Miller, and you know we all lamphiered up.
Yep, orange and black, I love it.
He supports everything I do, he supports physicians, and he's a volunteer in every capacity that he can be.
All right. Was that in the interview? That's a good, that's a good.
I like that term, lamphiered up, I'm far away now.
And I'd like to introduce Simon Wilson, who I've known for his whole career, couldn't be more excited for you, headed off to Harvard Park to be the principal assistant, your first step into administration. I know you bring avid strong in your classroom every day, I love your enthusiasm and your excitement, so couldn't be more excited for you, so Simon, welcome aboard. And unable to be with us tonight was Chris Burbaret, who's gonna be the new principal assistant at Butler Elementary School, so we did have a good team coming in, I couldn't be more proud. Thank you.
All right, well Superintendent, 11.2, and congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mrs. Sherman, this is for our collective bargaining agreement with our Service Employees International Union Local 15.
Thank you. President Mars and members of the board, whereas the Board of Education of Springfield Public School District 186 has concluded bargaining of a new collective bargaining agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 15, and whereas the terms of the agreement have been tentatively approved by the bargaining teams of the Board of Education and Local 15, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of Springfield Public School District 186 does hereby ratify the terms of that tentative agreement to be in effect for the 2021-2022 school year.
Could entertain a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammers?
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
In our crowd tonight, we have Bart Gornier and Ernie Nudo, who are the president and vice president of Local 15, thank you for your service and everything you do for your employees.
All right, Superintendent, 11.3.
Okay, Mr. Fetz, I'll turn it over to you for a resolution of our bank line of credit that we do annually.
President Mars, members of the board, the Superintendent recommends the following resolution, now therefore be resolved that the Superintendent is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with Illinois National Bank, finalizing the line of credit for $15 million at a rate of 0.61% for a term beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023.
Could entertain a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
Superintendent, 11.4.
Sure, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Shaver, this is about a change order for Grant Middle School, we're gonna have these from time to time as we tackle these big projects, we get in there and figure out we need to do something different, so I'll let Mr. Shaver explain.
Yeah, President Mars and members of the board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution, whereas the Board of Education has previously approved a bid from the below-listed contractors for location listed below, and whereas the architect for such project has recommended approval of the change order, and whereas sufficient funds exist to provide payment for the additional request of change to this contract, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following change order and directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the board, and that is like, like it was said, for Grant Middle School, an amount of $135,802.18 to John Cole Construction, and essentially it is the replacement of our existing boilers in the building to give us added capacity for the existing building and give us the longevity for that building. The boilers for the addition were already included, this is to replace our existing boilers with some that have some more capacity and longevity.
It's my understanding too that in the end, this will save us some cost on maintenance and service as well, and output?
Yes, and we'll be able to take the three boilers that we have in Grant, if I do that, it's over there, and use those parts for McLernan, who has the same identical boilers, so, and so eventually McLernan will probably need a couple of new boilers.
And Mr. Shaver, we're also adding additional square footage, so the capacity is definitely gonna be used.
Capacity will be there, and we've increased the capacity a little bit, in case there is a time when one boiler is down, we can maintain with the other boiler, similar to what we do at Southeast for their three large boilers.
Could entertain a motion?
Sub move.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
11.5, Superintendent?
Yes, President Mars and members of the board, whereas the Board of Education of the Springfield School District 186 maintains board policy manuals, giving direction to the district, and whereas such policy and manuals reflect case law, legal rulings, legislation, and district practice, now therefore be resolved that the Board approves the attached policy relating to the Student Online Personal Protection Act, otherwise known as SOPA. Are there any questions, or?
Could entertain a motion?
Sub moved. Second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none?
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
That is six I-votes.
Superintendent, 11.6.
Yes, this is another resolution for travel expenses for a board member to go to the State Triple I Conference, so be it removed, or approved, that the Board of Education approves travel expenses for Anthony Mar- Mayor's as followed for the Triple I Joint Annual Conference from November 18th through 21st of 2021. Registration, $499, hotel, $750, transportation, $38.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Hammers?
Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Aye.
Mars?
I'm voting present because this pertains to me.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
That is five I-votes and one present.
Okay, moving on to 6.1, our next regular school board meeting will be Tuesday, July 21st, at 5:30 p.m. for executive session, followed by open session at 6:00 p.m.
July 21st?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, look at this, July 6, 2021, there you go.